There you go. Call together, call to order. This Board of Education meeting for is February 12th, 2018. Roll call please.
Hussein Barry here. Fadwa Hamud.
Here.
Mary Lane.
Here.
Celia Nasser.
Here.
Mary Petrichoff.
Here.
James Thorpe.
Here.
President Meade.
Here. Next item please.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. Ms. Veronica Jakubus, Principal of Long School, introduced students who will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. Joining us tonight are Miley and Myla Dorsey, fifth graders at Long. Miley and Myla serve as the captain and lieutenant of our safety squad. Miley is co-chair of our recycling committee and Myla is co-chair of our anti-bullying committee. And they are wonderful students that exemplify Long School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you very much. Young ladies, would you come forward? Are you two sisters or twins or what?
Twins.
Are you twins? Congratulations. Miley. Who's Miley? Dear Miley. Myla. Congratulations. Thank you very much for leading us on the flag.
Thank you ladies.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next item please.
Superintendent's update, agenda items.
So I'd like to first start by taking a moment of silence. A student, Teem Kadhir from Cotter, who had passed away last month. So if we could just honor a moment of silence for him and his family, a tragedy, and our thoughts and prayers go out to him and his family. Thank you. So agenda items, we do have the, as we've had on the agenda since last May, we have Boundary and Capacity Committee. What's going to happen today is we're going to be presenting some additional plans that were based on the community forums that we had 10 plus one at River Oaks. And so our team, we call it the Situation Room. We spent a lot of time in this room looking at different models, looking at data. Now, the bigger discussion is going to happen on March 1st, which is on this agenda for a study session. So that's, we're going to have four hours that night to really get into the issue. But we felt it prudent to get the information out for the public on some of the other potential options. And I do want to stress, we do feel like we are doing what we think is best for students. We have different options. There's no perfect solution. There really isn't. And so there's a lot of different factors with each. And so that'll be on the agenda later for discussion item. Mr. Mashur will be presenting that with Mr. Wallace. I just wanted to mention that. With that, I know that the Board is going to get some training on the decision-making model that actually my cabinet administration has gone through. So there's a couple of days for them to sign up with a consultant. We use David Hewling's, it's kind of leadership and decision-making process. So I know the Board's aware of that as well. Other agenda item I do have every month, we're talking about retirements and, you know, one of the things you're going to see is that we have a lot, in our district, when we look at the data, we have a lot of our employees, it's kind of in a bubble, up to seven years, they can retire within seven years. And we have a lot of new employees up to about one to nine years. And part of that was during the budget cuts. We weren't hiring as much in the middle. So we're going to continue to see retirements. And again, we thank our retirees for their commitment. So we have Tina Amorozzi over 18 years. We have Amala Wajuma, 23 years of service. Angelique Berry Bondi, 25 years. Mona Badun, 20 and a third years of service. Gail Christensen, over 17 years of service. Melbourne Eckert, 32 years of service. Carol Harvey, over 18 years of service. And Pamela Reed, over 25 years of service. Again, we thank them for their dedication and congratulations on your retirement. They will see, receive personalized letters from me as well, or notes. So let's give them.
Congratulations.
That's it for agenda.
Non-agenda items?
So we have, we have a lot of positive news coming in to our school district. This is still under embargo, but as you know, last year we had the highest graduation rates of all time. We anticipate that that's going to go up. And so look for more to come with graduation rates in the near future. As you know, we had a blue ribbon school last year. We're hoping to have more blue ribbon schools coming into the district. We just learned today that, you might recall that three of our high schools were named academic state champs, not only for how well they do in high school, but preparation beyond. We just learned today that we are going to be one of the top 30 districts recognized by Bridge Magazine again as a district state champ. And that goes into our elementary grades. So that's a real positive. It's going to hit the press tomorrow. And I did send the Board, I just got it this afternoon. So there's another positive. And then the Mackinac Center is going to be recognizing as well, it's going to go out in a couple of weeks. But they, these are independent groups that look at, and it's, there's going to be some data showing the success of what's going on within Dearborn schools. So I just want to mention, there's a lot of good things going on. Want to thank, it's, it's the Board, it's administration, it's together, it's the community, it's our employees who are here. And so I think everyone deserves a big round of applause for really the positive news that keeps coming. So let's come on, give yourselves a pass. With that, we have a busy week because we have our advanced accreditation, which is a five-year renewal process, and it's been going on. We actually met with some of the panel last night for dinner, some of the administrators. The Board of Education was in today, some of the individuals to get interviews. I was interviewed, we had a presentation. So that's going to be going on over the next three days. And then on Wednesday, we actually have a Board meeting, an open public meeting at 3:00, where the group will be coming in and providing a report. I want to thank Ms. Farage and Ms. Hilda Rani, who've been doing a great job. I don't know that they're here tonight, but they, they probably won't be because they're so busy working 24/7 getting this ready. And again, thank you to the Board for participating. And so that's going to go on. And so if anyone's interested, you know, you can come to that meeting, but it's another positive. So, and again, that's a five-year renewal process. Couple other things I just want to say with our, our students continue to amaze me. I do have a long list of some things I want to talk about today. The MLK march, I mean fantastic, the Advisory Council put that together, really turned out well. It was in January on Martin Luther King Day. It wasn't too cold this time, it was kind of in between, it was a good showing. And really, it was a student-led initiative, and so we support that. Another thing, last week, I was at the Coramatsu, actually it was on February 2nd, we had a Coramatsu Day celebration. I know Trustee Lane had got us in contact, this is two years ago. And the students really did an awesome job. The mayor was there, the commissioner were on, Chuck. And really, it was just kind of a connection of, you know, encouragement for individuals to speak out against injustice, take action. And I put out a blog post, I actually put my words from my speech out online, so people can go and look at them. But again, it was really a positive. And so I'm just so proud of our students and their accomplishments. And the Advisory Council's been one of the best things I think I've had since I've been superintendent here. So want to thank the Board for their support as we continue to move forward with that. Snow day. So, you know, I had this joke going with the students about the New Year's resolutions. So I did break my New Year's resolution. And it was an ongoing joke that we had going, but in all seriousness, I did last one week longer than most do, according to the statistics, most.
For resolutions made.
For resolutions made, it's January 31st. But obviously, the students know it was a joke back and forth. And the serious nature though, we did have to close schools because student safety is the number one issue. And I'm going to ask Dr. Ball to come up with Mr. Mustin right now. We're just going to talk just briefly, a little bit about our process, because there's a lot that goes into potential school closures. One of the things I can tell you is that Dr. Ball and I, and then Mr. Mustin and Dr. Ball, we're in contact constantly, whether it be on a Sunday, in the evening, it's constant updates on reports. So I'll let Dr. Ball, and then Mr. Mustin and then is on the tail end helping to get information pumped out once we make a decision. And Dr. Ball really speaks directly to Mr. Andrews, that's another important, you know, aspect, just because of safety with the busing. So I'll let Dr. Ball speak to some of the things that you do.
I wake him up in the middle of the night, 24:30 and 5:00 a.m. Process that we use is we contact National Weather Service online to see what the look ahead forecast is. Then Glenn and I will talk about it, and we'll move forward. The biggest decision is, is what it's going to look like in the next 24 hours. Good news is, this week we got moderating temperatures, which means everything that we got last week will melt. But that still causes issues. The biggest thing is our communication. It's usually a battle to see who will wake up who first. So we check National Weather Service. I call a friend of mine who's the weather forecaster for Coast Fair Air Station Detroit up at Selfridge. And when things are really difficult, I check with Metro Airport and get their information on what they're seeing. And then convey this all to Glenn, and then Glenn and I and David talk, and then we go from there.
And we have the crisis team on a kind of a text network that we can call other individuals to get updates if needed. And again, looking at safety. There's a whole blog dedicated to what goes into the decision. We have some videos. We also put in the first bell, David, I know. And then David, do you want to explain what we do with the notification? Of course, I always notify the Board via the text, that was what was decided, and then we pump out the decision. Go ahead.
Sure. So along with the discussion that's going on internally, there's also the external discussion that Dr. Malako is involved in with other superintendents and also with our other members of our crisis team who are here in the city. So they're also giving us direct feedback as well. And Dr. Malako's in contact with city people and, as well as Mr. Ball. So there's actually a lot of different, you know, people involved in that process. Once the decision is made, once Dr. Malako makes that decision, I'm already setting up the notices and getting everything ready. A few years back, the Detroit area media streamlined their process. I used to have to call every single station, give a password and a code word, and then I was able to, and then I, you know, could give the call that the district was closed. It's now automated, it's now online. I log in, I give one command, and it goes to all of the Detroit area media, channels 2, 4, 7, radio stations, several radio stations. It also goes to the papers as well. And then, so that's, that's the broad form of communication. What really has become way more effective over the last, I would say, two to three years is social media. So as well as setting up and getting ready to let that notice go out on the broadcast media, we also have messages set up and ready to go on our district's Facebook page and on the district's Twitter account. And that usually, so just as an example, the Facebook message reached, reached over 20,000 people this past snow day notification. So you can see how that, that reach has really grown over the years. It used to be, you know, when we first started, maybe 5, 6,000, it got up to about 10, 12, and now we're at like 20,000 people that the Facebook message alone is reaching. And that's that domino effect that it reaches out to. We also put it up on our district's website, we put it up on our channel, on Channel 19 as well, so it goes out there. We'll send a robocall to all the parents and staff, they especially like getting that robocall from us. The last robocall that we sent out, we pre-recorded a message, so we did a little bit more of a generic one. But we're able to do it in, that gives us the capability to do it in English and Arabic so that we reach all our audience that way. That robocall goes out as a phone call, as an email, and as a text message. So between email, phone call, text message, Facebook, Twitter, district website, district cable channel, channel 2, 4, 7, 760, WJR, 950, WWJ, a half dozen other radio stations, and newspaper accounts, if you're missing that we're not closed, then it's your fault.
What about, what about the superintendent Instagram account that went up by 804 days?
Oh, well, yeah, that goes without saying. Come on, we gotta talk about superintendent's Instagram account, because that's just, just going like markers.
I was not, I was not in the students' favor on Monday, but by Friday, I was their hero.
Yeah, can imagine. So, so we try to hit all those meetings and that. I will say too, over the years, with social media, it's been both a blessing and a bit of a hindrance, no matter what you call, no matter what superintendents call through, you know, this is through the history of school closings, superintendents take the brunt of, of the messaging. Now it's just a lot easier to express their people, for them to express their feelings on social media. If you close, they hate you. If they, if you close, you're the best thing. If you stay open, they hate you. If you stay open, it's the best thing. So you'll never please everybody with these snow day decisions. That's why the decisions are made, as you said, for the safety of students.
Sure. And I would just say, you know, one of the things, obviously, safety is most important. Friday, it was clear to us, we called it really early, it was going to be a safety issue, as everyone was aware when it hit, and that was based on the forecast. But when a decision is made by me, you know, with, they recommend, and I'm, it's my decision, I'm accountable for that, I'm making that decision for 21,000 students, basically. So we also remind parents that if they really feel that their specific road is unsafe, they always have the ability to say, look, we're not going to send because there's a safety issue. Because we try to monitor everything, but obviously, we don't know every single route to the school. We try to monitor it, we do our best with the city. But again, I just want to remind parents that, because we also get the other end. And my understanding is that there was a lot of complaints going into the state, saying that a lot of school districts were closing too often this year. I got that information the other day, so.
Trustee Petlist.
Factored into this is also our staff.
Sure.
And while most of our staff, or a good portion of our staff, lives in the nearby vicinity, I'm sure that out of the staff, we do have them living in other communities. That being said, of late, it seems to be, the snow totals are, we're having banding going on, where, you know, down river gets the largest totals, and as you progress, you have a lot less. School districts are, you know, some school districts are closing differently than we are. For those staff members who have students in other school districts, are we seeing an uptick in having an issue with accommodating them? Or have, I'm assuming that the majority of them have a backup plan for if their school district calls off for their students or not. But are we seeing that as becoming more of an issue, the way the weather has kind of transformed?
I don't think, I don't think in HR we've seen any, I mean, the Monday, you know, was there a few more because, you know, and Super Bowl is Sunday night.
Yeah, do we, do we have enough substitutes for?
We are, we are often short, and we could look at that data, but I don't think it was out of the norm of other Mondays. I can't, maybe Super Bowl, maybe the Monday may have been. But we generally, we generally have about a 92 to 95% fill rate of subs. So we, every day, we are short a few positions because of the shortage that's hit. So every day, we get the email from Ruth Bankhead at Human Resources, and we're short a few subs. We're actually, we're short in pair pros as well, we're trying to work on. And that, part of that is the shortage across the state. But we are at, we're average, I think, about a 92 to 95% fill rate. Isn't that right, Ms. Alibez?
So for example, Monday, we were, had 28 vacant spots not filled, which is a little bit more than usual.
That's a little more, yes.
But Tuesday, it was 19. And Tuesday wasn't, the roads weren't bad and there wasn't any.
What happens when you, we have spots that we can't fill?
We creatively shift things around, and we have emergency subplans in every building so that when we don't have a sub, when we don't have a, actually, you know, that day, so when we don't have a sub for a classroom, the building principal already has an emergency subplan that they put into effect. But on that day, we had partial closures. So we had Michael Berry Career Center and the Dearborn Heights campus closed. So we actually sent out those teachers to cover the other vacancies. Because during partial closures, staff reports.
So reports, alright. Thank you.
So, and the other thing to keep in mind is that you're allowed six days, and then if you go beyond that, you have to make up the day by state law. So those districts that have gone over, they're going to be having to make up their days, unless they get some kind of special waiver. And my understanding is that they're not, they're not just handing those out. So that's why we want to make sure, you know, we are, safety number one, but.
Trustee Lane?
Well, I would just like to put out an alert, because Trustee Petrichoff is right in, in that this is an issue. And in the future, we could see it more. We're starting to encounter difficulty hiring teachers, and I hear more and more, just through my own contacts, of young people that don't want to go into education. So I noticed that Representative Hamud has introduced a bill into the state legislature. I think our public discourse needs to appreciate education more and support public education because the last years, the last decades, when teachers have been criticized and criticized and not appreciated as much for their, their daily miracles that they perform, has taken its toll. And a lot of teachers have given back money and haven't had raises in years. So we need to deal with that as a state. And it's going to be, it's going to be an issue because, you know, I ask young people, and, and I've had remarks from some of them, I don't want to work for a salary like that. So as a country, if we want to be productive, if we want to be great, we need to have great education. And that means great public education, because public education is the backbone of the United States.
Thank you, gentlemen. So I'm going to continue with my commentary. Dr. Byerol had asked to come up for a few minutes, just to talk about the CTE month from the Michael Berry.
Dr. Malako, Dr. Meade, and members of the Board, thanks for giving me just a couple minutes of your time. If you know me, you know I can talk for an hour, right? And I'll be more than glad to get on the agenda later in the year. It's an exciting time for career and technical education. I'm looking at stuff coming down from Talent and Economic Development, the Talent Investment Agency, the Michigan Career Pipeline, some proposed legislation. They really are starting to look at career and technical education, and what are our kids coming out of high school? Maybe a four-year college degree at U of M is great for a set of kids, it's maybe not great for all kids. And so we're looking at having more high-quality options for kids who can go out, have a good-paying career, raise a family, and live the American dream. So lots of stuff up in the air. My three new best friends here and I will talk, and later this year, we'll come together with some, some updates on, on things that might happen. But as I mentioned, it is National Career and Technical Education Month. Department of Education in Washington sets that date every year, and Governor Snyder has also made that Michigan's Career and Education Month in February here. So I thought I'd just take about 90 seconds and highlight a few little points of pride and a few things that we have going on in career and technical education in Dearborn right now. So first thing, I was really, really worked hard on this for a year, and I have to congratulate Mark Kent and Ala Yunus, our two automotive teachers at Fordson and Edsel Ford. They went, underwent the really rigorous NATF recertification inspections, both of them passed with flying colors. If you know those guys, you know, some of them were working 14-hour days, seven days a week for two months before those inspections to get things in shape. So I really have to say that those guys did yeoman's duty and, and we passed with flying colors. We have started the Dearborn Business Academy at the Michael Berry Center, bringing all three of our business programs, accounting, business management, and marketing, together to give kids a comprehensive experience. We had a little snafu with course selection sheets last year, namely, those classes weren't on it. And we still managed to get it up and running this year. And I have to send out a commendation to Alan Farhood, our teacher there, who has not only taught all three of those brand-new curriculums, but he has made, I mean, above and beyond what I could have ever expected, connections with the Chamber of Commerce, with local businesses, is bringing his kids out and getting them real-world experience and really making it a meaningful thing. I thought in five years, we would have the preeminent business program in any high school in Michigan. And at the end of this year, we might be there. He really has done a fantastic job, and have to let him know that. Michael Berry Career Center, I was looking back, you know, when I first started my job, we had about 175 kids there. We have 435 this year. My sort of thumbnail estimate for next year is 550. So we're continuing to really grow programs there. Not because we're just cramming kids in there, not because we're crowded, because I have a great staff, they work really hard at what they do, they have all kinds of meaningful opportunities for students, and students are our best recruiters. They go tell their friends, hey, you better get over there. And so we have some tremendous growth, and I hope that keeps going there too. We have partially to, I was going to say blame, but maybe it's thank for that, we a few years ago decided that those business and community partnerships were the most important thing of career technical education. So I know I saw many of you at our Fall Advisory Committee meeting. We had 120 members of the community come in to meet with all our career tech ed programs and talk about what they could offer, what we need to do with our students and whatever. It's a great thing, we really do a great job with those advisory committee meetings. I know I sent you an email, but if any of you are free this Thursday, our spring advisory is from 3:00 to 5:00 o'clock. You're welcome to drop in and see those community members come in and, and talk to our, our programs there. I know Dr. Meade was there and talked my ear off for a long time, it was very enjoyable. While you're there, from 5:00 to 7:00 o'clock this year, we're also hosting our first and last annual career open house, where we have the colleges coming in, we have various career entities, we have all of our programs there. And we've invited parents to come in and see what our career and technical education programs are about. We're hosting it at Michael Berry, but I do have the CT programs from the homeschools coming, as well as some of the college programs, adult and community ed, and trying to get the early college to come. And we're just going to have this year. I say it's the last annual because two weeks from now, Adult and Community Ed is doing the same thing at the Ford Center for the Performing Arts, 5:00 to 8:00 on February 28th. We have already decided that next year, we're just going to do one together. And theirs is much more organized, and they have more people working on it than me, so we're just going to participate with them. But again, if you're available this Thursday, 3:00 to 5:00 advisory meeting, 5:00 to 7:00 our College and Career Open Fair, you know, please come out. And I know there's a million students and parents watching, it is open to anybody. If you want to know what the career and technical education programs are about, please come over to the Michael Berry Career Center, we're on the east side, the tall part of the building. Come right in, I'll have some student volunteers there, we'll show you around. So that being said, we're heavy into signing up kids for next year. Parents want any information, berry, like the fruit, berry deerbornschools.org. If you go there, the very front page has my contact information, please email me or call me, and I can get ahold of anybody. So thank you for the time, this is short for me. So, and if you don't have any questions, I'm sorry. I also have to tell you that Dr. Green was going to be here, but she had a last-minute family obligation she couldn't get out of. She normally would stand here right with me because we do everything together. And she did say, you know, say hi, and the door's always open. Okay, yes?
I do have a question.
Absolutely.
I, you, I know you want to talk more. The cooperation from the high schools with the counseling department in order to promote these programs, has that, I'm going to assume, assume that it is helping?
Absolutely. And my dad was a high school counselor forever, so you know, the counselors are my best buddies. I have to say, we, we've really worked hard over the last five years on, on building those counselor relationships. They absolutely are supportive of everything we do, both at the home high schools and here. And actually, many of them meet with me pretty routinely, saying, hey, we should have, or hey, can we do?
That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have a relationship where you meet with them and they see what's going on?
Yeah, and actually, they've asked me to sit on the CPI committee that's working in counseling right now. We actually met today, we had some great conversations about what's going on. They, they know my big thing is these educational development plans, right? That kids start ninth grade with a plan of where they want to go, instead of just randomly choosing classes. And so we've really, really worked hard on ways we, we can beef up those EDPs, we call them. And that's, that's coming down from the national and the state level too, that, that's a real focus of where we're going. So thank you again for your time. I'll come back later in the spring when we can talk.
All right. I've got a few more things, so I'll just continue along. Just want to make a comment or a statement here that I'm going to go over. I prefer not to be commenting on this topic because it really has nothing to do with our strategic plan or the students. However, due to the fact that a comment from the last board meeting was published in the January 11th press and guide, and then I've heard rumors out there, I feel that I have to make a public comment on the issue. I've also informed the Board of that potential via email. A comment was made that asked for a motion to go in a closed session to discuss a personnel issue involving me, and again, that was published. I wanted to make it clear that I'm unaware of what this is in regards to, and I believe that the collective, majority of the Board is not aware. There has not been a conversation indicating what this is about, and I have very little communication to indicate what it pertains to. I did send an email to the entire Board asking them to honor my rights as an employee, which are provided to any employee when a request is made for a personnel meeting. which are provided to any employee when a request is made for a personnel meeting. Since all the documentation that I've received from the board is extremely positive, including my evaluation ratings, I can only assume that it's based on rumor, innuendo, or secondhand information like it has been in the past. In fact, during my 23-year history, which includes my time as a substitute teacher, teacher, assistant principal, principal in two schools, HR executive director, now superintendent, I've always received extremely positive evaluations and communication from my supervisors in regards to my performance. As a professional who strives for excellence, I always want to improve in any position, and I'm very self-motivated to continue to improve under the positive encouragement and directive, direction by the board and in the best interests of the students. This positive and professional reputation over my 24-year, 23-year career is very well documented, not only in my HR file, but also in the public record. I would like to ask the audience and everyone to respect our protocols and due process rights, as we never mention the names of individuals involved in personnel matters. To mention the name of an employee in an open meeting in regard to a personnel matter is not in accordance with state law, the Michigan Open Meetings Act, and our Board of Education protocol. All of our 2,700-plus employees in the district, in accordance with federal and state law, are afforded certain rights, and the first step in the process is to communicate and have a conversation. If a personnel meeting was scheduled in accordance with the Open Meetings Act under Section 8A, it is a sole right of the employee to call for an open or closed session. That includes secretaries, teachers, principals, custodians, bus drivers, and yes, the superintendent, etc. Thus, a motion for a closed session on a personnel issue would not be in accordance with 8A of the Open Meetings Act. If a personnel meeting were scheduled for any employee in the district, they would need to be aware of the meeting in writing with specific reason, and they would then have the opportunity to decide whether it would be a closed or open after receiving the written notice of at least, usually at least 24 hours in advance. I know that our union heads are very well-versed in that process. Most of the personnel meetings for any employee in the district end up closed, but the assumption of a closed meeting cannot be made until the employee decides. Since the same rights are afforded to me as an employee of Dearborn Public Schools and under state and federal law, I want to publicly confirm that I have not received such written notice. Again, I'm unaware of what this is about because all the documentation and feedback that I've received from the board has been extremely positive. Throughout my 23-year career in Dearborn, in my three years as superintendent, I have maintained a high level of integrity as I worked hard to provide a high-quality education for our students. I am an extremely transparent superintendent. As most of you know, you can find me anywhere on social media, and it's not hard to find where I've been. I believe that we need to work together in positive collaboration for the benefit of the students that we serve. I will never change who I am, as I always do what I think is right for our students, despite political issues or distractions that arise at our meetings from time to time. I want to mention that I appreciate the awesome support that I receive from the students, the community, our staff, including instructional and non-instructional staff. In addition, we have an awesome administrative team that's here today, that is doing a great job together as a team to steer this district in a positive direction according to our strategic plan. I want to close the statement by mentioning that I appreciate the exemplary support of the Collective Board of Education. I appreciate your awesome leadership and greatly value the ongoing support that you have provided to me and my administration since I've been superintendent and throughout my 23-year career in Dearborn Public Schools. Thank you.
Mr. Trusty Pelichkov?
Just as a commentary for the statement that Dr. Malakos stated, I think that we all tend to inadvertently during conversations not be mindful of the rules at all times and can mistakenly or accidentally say things. But we need to be aware that this is a public meeting. It's open, it's available for everybody to see online and in the print. Once that goes out to the public, it then starts conversations in the community that we don't control. And that is why we have these protections in place, so that there isn't any attempt to rumor monger without all the facts. And so, we need to always be careful in our conversations, and I am as guilty as anyone else of so-called putting my foot in my mouth and saying things that I didn't think carefully through. But we always have to attempt to practice our, what we preach and be careful in what we represent for the community at large.
I'd just like to say that with the Open Meetings Act, if any of us have a complaint about the superintendent, then I think it's important that we understand that we put it in writing and submit it to the superintendent so that he has the opportunity to declare whether he wants to have a private session or a public session to discuss the issue. So, usually in a disciplinary kind of situation, we start with a face-to-face conversation because usually that can resolve it. But if it's not resolved, then it's necessary to put it in writing so that the person who's being complained about has a very good idea about what the complaint is, and then can move forward to make a decision about whether they want a closed session or an open session. So, that's my summary of what the superintendent just said, and I think we all need to pay attention to that. Okay, next.
All right. Thank you. So, I'll move on to, I just want, I have a few more things on, finance study came out. We plan to present that in the future from the state, and just a couple highlights. The base foundation amount is about over $9,500 with the recommending and not including cost for transportation, food services, and other items. But one of the things that would be interesting for this district is they're saying it should be about a 70% increase for students at the WITA 1 and 2 for EL students, and they have poverty levels. So, I'm not going to get into a lot, but what I can tell you, there's going to be a lot on this. We're going to pump it out on my blog, on our social media. The Wayne County Rees is leading the way, and it's a statewide effort. A lot of money was put into the study. You may have seen it in the press. And so, more to come, but I would like to present more details at a board meeting in the future. So, I just wanted to mention that, you know, that study. I'm going to ask Mr. Wall, and I'm sorry, we are taking a little longer today, but I'm going to ask Mr. Wall to come up to talk about, and Mr. Andrews', transportation costs. This was something that came up in some of our meetings, including some of our cost of transportation. It came up at, I think, a couple of the community forums and whatnot, so we're here to provide some information, including the last board meeting.
Well, Mr. Andrews looked at the routing for high school. We had a question whether we could reduce buses for transportation from three students to a seat to two. When we looked at that, he came to the data that for Edsel Ford, there'd be five additional buses to service those students, and Dearborn, four additional buses. There would be no additional buses needed at Fortson. They're mostly a walk-to-school community. With that, we look at the actual busing cost. An actual bus costs about $110,000 per bus, so there'd be a one-time cost of roughly $90,000 to make sure we have the available buses to do that. And then, on an annual basis, each route is roughly $54,000, so you're looking at $480-some thousand for annual cost to increase the busing availability to reduce the students on bus.
That's for both schools?
For both schools, correct. For both schools, for the total, the nine buses in total.
Well, budget man, do we have any money for that?
We always have money. It's how we spend the money and our priorities.
What we prioritize.
So, something else?
And our strategic plan is really forcing the money towards the classroom. So, does it directly impact the classroom? No, but is it indirectly? But then, you have to look at all the other options in the district and how we want to fund public education.
Okay. Good answer.
Yes, or trustee?
So, rating nine buses, are we saying that some of the, there's nine buses out there that are close to or over the number that it's supposed to have on the bus? What are we saying? I mean, if we?
Well, what we're saying is if you want to reduce the capacity on the bus for how many students we route, to have a maximum of two students per seat versus three like we currently do, then that would require additional buses.
Nine additional buses.
Correct, correct.
So, if we go from three seats to three?
Three students.
Three people in a seat to two people in a seat? Then that amount of money has to be spent, and that many number of buses?
Correct.
Have to be bought.
And drivers have to be found.
Correct. And that'll be a very difficult part because there is a staffing shortage for support positions.
Right. Buying buses, you could do, hiring the staff to drive them is a difficult part.
So, you're just informing us?
Correct.
That this is the?
Yeah, we're just writing data back to the board.
These are repercussions of going to two?
Right.
Persons per seat.
Correct.
And on average, how full are those buses? I know there's times that we get to the max, but where are we usually at?
On average?
Yeah.
I'd have to go refer to the last board meeting. I had that information. But going off the top of my mind, I would say at Edsel Ford, those are our fullest buses. We have a couple that probably average 65, where if you include Dearborn High and Edsel Ford, we probably average around 54, 58 students, off the top of my mind.
Okay. And are we talking about the larger buses that you were talking about at the last meeting then with these numbers that you're giving us?
Correct. What, they seat 74?
Seven, 78.
78. Any other questions?
Average lifetime of a bus? 10 years?
Go ahead. Yeah, 10 years is, once you get past 10 years, that's when your maintenance costs start going up because you potentially could have transmission, bigger problems that could arise. But during the first 10 years, you're pretty safe at lower maintenance costs.
So, do you do buses like you do roofs?
We do cycle through, yes. And we try to replace, you'll see on the agenda tonight that we're asking the replacement of four buses. Again, how many total buses do we have?
We have 70 right now, so we're going to purchase, so we're asking to purchase four with the opportunity of we could retain four buses, if we could hire some more staff between now and next school year, or we can sell four older buses. Do want to point out right now, take advantage of that with the proposal of those four buses. We do take, they are a little bit more expensive if you look at other districts, but we tried, for example, we purchased the buses with stainless steel footwells and things like that to try to get further life out of them.
Thank you.
And seat belts.
And seat belts, lap belts. Any other questions from the board members? Superintendent?
No, I just wanted Mr. Wall to say for the next thing, ORS, can you just quickly give an up?
Yes, we did receive the money from the State of Michigan ORS to refund to those employees that worked for us from July 1st, 2010, to September 3rd, 2012. There's three basic categories. There's current employees, retired, or employees that left us, and deceased employees. So, we treat them as three separate categories. We're looking at the beginning of March to be paid for retirement, or for current employees, and another day for retired or employees that moved on to another district. The actual ones that have passed away is a little more complicated. We're still working with our orders to make sure we meet the income tax, you know, IRS issues for those individuals, and we're maintaining, make sure we have current addresses for most of the people that are left us or have been deceased. So, we'll see that money going back out to employees here at the beginning of March.
You actually got money from the state?
Yes, we did. They wanted to push that issue onto the districts as fast as they could. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. So, I just have a few more, and I do have kind of a list today. Just wanted to give you an update on the concealed weapons legislation. It was talked about amongst the State Superintendent Association for State of Michigan, and the state police have actually put a slowdown on that with the, because what they're saying is if we get into a situation where someone had a concealed weapon and/or if there were two people, they don't know who the good guy are, they're just going to basically, they're going to protect students, so they're just going to take them all, you know, if you have a gun, they're going to take it all out. So, they're warning the legislature a little bit about that this is, so that's kind of what's slowed things down is the information I'm getting. So, it's the police, law enforcement that's actually saying that this would be a problem.
Trusty?
I've commented on this before. I would just like to note to people, and I've asked people to contact the State House of Representatives and the State Senate. There have been over 200 school shootings, just school shootings, since Sandy Hook. There is one every week on a school property in the United States while we're, while we sit. We need to contact our legislature and express whether we think this is right or wrong, and our police chiefs are telling us this is not a positive. So, I really would ask people to think about this because it's a major issue in America. We need to, we need to be sure our schools are safe. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just a couple more things. Sorry, it keeps going, but Dr. Lazar and Ms. Bartels from the library, there was an issue last month with students having access. We actually worked and helped with the library. I want to thank Dr. Lazar, who works for the district, but he's also a library commissioner and then the library commission, because we don't have any jurisdiction with the library, but we can provide recommendations, and we did.
This is the Centennial Library?
The Centennial Library, yeah. They were, there was an issue where the students weren't going to be allowed to go in there without an adult, and it created quite an uproar during exam time, and so, we were trying, we tried to work collaboratively with them to come up with a solution, and we did. I believe it's been working, so we're going to continue to help and partner with the city, with the library, with all the local areas.
I think we need to make sure at the City Relations meeting that we have a march that's on the agenda, so we find, get feedback from them as to how effective what the library commission put in place was, since they've had a chance to kind of cycle through an exam period.
Okay. Thank you. Just moving right along, thank you, trustee Pelichkov. February 28th, there is a job fair at the Performing Arts as employment, so that's will be something that if people are interested in jobs, that they're going to have that at 5:00 PM. Wanted to mention that. Tomorrow night is the Mardi Gras at the Dearborn Hills. It's a fundraiser for our school district that starts at 4:30. It goes into the evening, and in the, every month, every month, you see all the money that's getting donated back from the Education Foundation, so I want to mention that. And the last thing I want to just say, I'm just, again, proud of the students. I was at, Edsel's going through this fundraiser right now, and the students from my council invited me for a bowling fundraiser yesterday. I was in Allen Park, and, you know, Mr. Casebolt was on Facebook Live and talked about these initiatives the students are involved in, but they really want to do good in the community. And so, I'm just so proud of our students, and they were excited that I was able to come. I had fun. I did bowl one, what do you call it, one slate or whatever it may be. I'm not a big bowler, so I don't know what the term. I don't know what the?
Frame.
One frame. But with the teachers, and I can't have came in the middle, so I did okay, but my bowling is just straight down, so you need a lot of splits and things like that. Now, if it was curling, it would have probably been something different for you. No.
No, ice hockey.
Hockey, yeah. When you said we might be sledding on the snow day, the reality is we're on the pond playing hockey. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that. It was a real positive. And the last thing, chatting with the superintendent continues. I know trustee Thorpe, you were at the last one, and I've seen other trustees at the different events. We had one at Dearborn High, Gear Park, and the next one is at the Michael Berry Center. Sometimes we get large groups, sometimes we get small. I like it both ways because if it's small, it's kind of a nice conversation we get to have, and it was a real positive that we had both at Dearborn High and Gear Park. So, thank you, everyone, and I know I took a lot of time today, but some of these were important issues that we need to discuss.
Next item, please.
Next item, recognition, acknowledgements, commendations. Tonight's commendations will be read by the following Fortson High School seniors, Reem Abujeed and Ali Alata. Are they here? Yes.
Good evening, superintendent, board members, and community members. My name is Reem Abujeed, and I am the student, a board government president of Fortson High School.
Hi, I'm Ali Alata. I'm also a senior at Fortson High School. Reem and I are very proud to represent Fortson High School this evening. I'll begin with the district commendations. Commendations to Dr. Jill Chokel, Nadra Lombardi, Julie Wilson, Nadia Berry, Jumana Baydoun, and members of the GSRP preschool staff for their outstanding effort and success in securing 64 additional slots for preschoolers to participate in the Great Start to School Readiness Program. Conducting an enrollment drive mid-year and opening classrooms for second semester on a very short timeline presented a huge challenge. Acceptance of the GSRP rooms involved relocation of existing classrooms and much transition. Appreciation also to Principal Susan Stanley, Shadi Farhat, and classrooms, classroom teachers Melissa Schick and Heather St. George, and the staff in each school that received a new GSRP classroom. Special thanks to teachers Kathy Lawrence and Renee Reed for welcoming new families and preparing classrooms for new students while continuing to teach their own students. The leadership for early learning is essential and valued.
Commendations to the following Dearborn Public Schools high school seniors on being recognized by the Michigan High School Athletic Association as academic scholar athletes. To qualify for this recognition, student athletes must be a high school senior with
a varsity letter in an eligible sport and have a minimum cumulative grade point average of at least 3.5. MHSAA student athletes from Dearborn High School are Brittany Carter, Olivia Grantham, Caleb Rice, Joseph Wincinski. MHSAA student athletes from Fortson High School are Labib Jama, Jamila Zban. MHSAA students athletes from Etzel Ford are Hamza Azdi, Danya Hamood, William Moreno, Quinn Marine, Abigail Martin, Jennifer Tran, Andrew White. Additional congratulations to Etzel Ford student William Moreno on being named a finalist in this year's MHSAA academic scholar program. He is one of the 120 finalists selected from 1,422 applications received by the program this year. Thirty-two MHSAA scholarship winners will be announced in February.
Commendations to Mark Andrews, Director of Transportation, and the entire team in the Transportation Department. Despite very hazardous weather conditions over the last several days, the staff in transportation demonstrated a commitment to the safety of students and provided them with safe passage to and from school. There were a few delays as buses had to travel slower due to the weather, winter weather, but at all times, though, a safety of students was priority. Thank you to the professionals in transportation who demonstrated a commitment to their job and to the students who they serve. Etzel Ford High School, commendations to Scott Casebolt, Principal of Etzel Ford, and his team for sharing their expertise in the implementation and use of professional learning communities, or PLC, PLCs. At a recent general administrators' meeting, the team represented by Iman Ahmed, Lori Lutner, Janine Onian, Dana Eras, Gretchen Bajark, Kelly Bugajewski, and Mr. Casebolt led a professional development workshop for principals and assistants, principals in the district. Their knowledge and experience with professional learning communities was a great benefit to all administrators. The PLC model provides the framework for collaboration between teachers at all grade levels and subject matter.
Congratulations to Etzel Ford singers Alisa Keldren, Catherine Dix, Nora Heaton, and Garrett Herman, who each competed and earned top-one ratings at the Michigan Voc- School Vocal Music Association District 12 solo and ensemble. All four will proceed to the State Solo and Ensemble Festival in April. Thank you to Dr. Sean Jackman for accompanying, accompanying the Etzel Ford singers. Commendations to Dearborn High School students Katie Gerber, Sam Yakum, and Heather Slannick, who each earned a one rating at the MSVMA solo and ensemble and qualified to enter the state-level competition in April.
Commendations to Dearborn High teacher Mary Guzebek and the many other teachers, staff members, and parents who are helping young people understand the differences between positive activism and harassing bullying behavior on social media. Although there are some who choose to use social media in a, in an appropriate way, people like Mary are turning these bad decisions into teachable moments. Commendations to Fortson student Fatima Alrabai and Jamila Women's Ensemble, who earned top-one ratings at the District MSVMA District Solo and Ensemble, and qualified to compete in the State Solo and Ensemble. Commendations to Fortson student Amal Khalil and Kantis Men's Ensemble and the Fortson Chamber Choir, who all participated and earned twos in the District 12 Solo and Ensemble. Fortson High School will host the State Solo and Ensemble on April 20 and Commendations to the students on Fortson's winter sport teams on their 2017, 18 first semester grades. The athletes on these teams deserve positive recognition for being able to balance the time commitment of athletics and their academic performance. These team GPA averages balance all team member performances, eliminating no one from the average. Girls' varsity basketball, 3.76, boys' bowling, 3.64, boys' swimming, 3.51, girls' bowling, 3.49, freshman girls' basketball, 3.33, JV girls' basketball, 3.28, JV boys' basketball, 3.17, cheer, 3.05, boys' varsity basketball, 3.04, wrestling, 3.02, and freshman boys' basketball, 2.87. Also, congratulations to the Fortson varsity football team, which was, once again, achieved honorable mention 2017 academic all-state in recognition of outstanding performance on the field and in the classroom. Thank you to the Fortson Athletic Department and coaches and the Fortson teaching staff for their commitment and assistance with helping student athletes achieve inside and outside of the classroom.
Congratulations to the Fortson wrestling team, who won their sixth straight team district champion, championship. The Tractors move on to the regional competition that, for the first time, will be hosted at Fortson on Wednesday, February 14. Good luck to all the Fortson grapplers, the term used to describe someone who wrestles, as they prepare to show love to their opponents this Valentine's Day. Commendations to the OL Smith art teacher, Mr. Stephen Cade, who was selected to take part in the Teacher at Sea Program offered by the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association. Mr. Cade was one of the only 25 teachers nationwide selected to take part in the NOAA program. The students at Smith played a huge part in helping Mr. Cade complete the application process. Selections of their artwork that, that combined art with lessons on various sea animals were included in the application. Mr. Cade will go out to the sea for a few weeks in August with NOAA to study ocean conditions and sea life and their habitats. We look forward to hearing about Mr. Cade's adventures in the fall.
Commendations to the Haumantusori Elementary students and Girl Scout troop 71803, who organized a pajama day at their school to raise donations of new pajamas to give to homeless and displaced children. The girls' end troupe leader, Jennifer Morozwaski, worked with principal, school principal Tammy Forner, to collect new pajamas, books, and toys from students and staff who had the opportunity to wear their night clothes to school in exchange for their donations. Thirty-three sets of pajamas, including PJs, purchased with $120 in donations, were delivered to the, by the Girl Scouts to a local homeless shelter. Commendations to Henry Ford Elementary students and staff who have been very busy working to help their community. In December, students in Mrs. Bellings and Mrs. Venice's classes, along with members of Mrs. McCormick's Ecology Club, made ornaments and sold them during lunchtime. They raised $650 to help feed homeless families at the Wayne County Homeless Shelter. In January, physical education and teacher Mrs. Sores and second-grade teacher Mrs. Herred organized a mitten tree. Families donated a total of 74 items, including hats, mittens, and scarves, for families at the Wayne County Homeless Shelter.
Thank you. Commendations to Henry Ford's staff and numerous community partners and sponsors who collab, collaborated to hold an activity-packed family STEM night. Families had the chance to explore over 30 hands-on activities, including remote-controlled robots and cars, stomp rockets, catapults, and parachute drops, and electromagnets. Participants, participants also had the opportunity to meet engineers and scientists and learn about their jobs. The event was possible thanks to the efforts of Dearborn's own STEM-tastic team consisting of Dearborn STEM Middle School, DCMST, and Fortson's Robotics Club, along with community sponsors, U of M Dearborn Access, Ford Motor Company, General Motors, the Environmental Interpretive Center, and the Society of Automotive Engineers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job, young people.